Okay, all set, okay. Would you like to call the meeting to order? Roll call, please.
Chairman Gray.
Here.
Member Carey.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsh.
Here.
Alternate member Henigan.
Here.
And alternate member Lemming.
Here.
And let the record show that members Hutchins and Kozinski are absent with notice.
Good. Thank you, Tracy. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's raise your hands.
The United States of America. 330th of August. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may have to say prayers. So, let's, Rick, are you, you want, we'll do the minutes first?
I can make my suggestion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we move on the agenda, item three, to the last item, to get items four and five heard earlier?
Yes, okay, good. Is everybody in agreement with changing the agenda accordingly?
And so therefore is there a motion to make that change?
Yes, I make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Agreed. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll just move two down to...
Three.
Three, yeah, good. Thank you. Minutes, first start of our business, though, we'll keep in that order, number one. Any comments regarding the minutes from our December meeting?
I have one. On page four, the, next to the last paragraph that begins with Member Kozinski, third line down, it says driveway would be impacted, and I believe it's compacted. Wayne, do you agree that that's...
Agree.
That's my only comment.
Good, good catch. Just goes to show you, somebody does read the minutes.
Good.
That's very good. Good. Any other comments regarding the minutes? Can I have a motion, please, to approve?
Motion.
Good, thank you. Second, all in favor of approving the minutes from the December meeting?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So, in order to proceed with our previous amendment to the agenda, we have the item number three, which is the Comp Plan Amendment item.
Number two.
Number two is going to be taken down to the bottom, Concept Plan Review, right?
No, no, it's number two. The Concept Plan for 42 Harbor Drive will be your next item.
Three goes there.
You want to do that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Because we have people here for that.
Understood, thank you. Okay, great, I'm with you. Yes, so therefore, with regard to that, the, this is a quasi judicial hearing, and therefore, let our town attorney, please.
Any exporte communication on this matter?
None.
Seeing none, okay.
Good. Staff swearing in, swear in, our witnesses?
Anybody who likes, would like to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are providing to the commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Before you have requests from 42 Harbor Drive South, they were previously before the board in December and have taken the comments into consideration and have resubmitted with those comments included in their site plan and proposed drawings. At the present time, we're talking on page A1.2, would reflect the two-story structure as proposed, with a two-car garage, the septic deck and drain field itemized in the front. We have no legal issues with the property. The only item that we, and they've agreed to correct, this was just a question of the deck going too far east and being anchored to the property line has to maintain a five-foot setback, but it's something that can't be taken care of in the regular permitting process. Apart from that, the setbacks, the open space calculations, floor area ratios, were all looked at and find it being compliant. So, at this time, if the board has any questions, the applicant is also here, by the way, if you have any questions, or I could turn the floor over to them to explain the project.
Sure, please.
Yeah, my name's David Frank, representing Andersons. Just one correction of the patio, that's not a concrete patio there on the east side, that's a white gravel. Now, I think white gravel would be permissible to go to the property line, is that correct?
I'm referring to the wood deck being anchored to the property, right behind that.
Oh, I see, yeah, that's going to be eliminated.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay. I see on my plan, the wood deck is cut back to, back of the house, the left side of the house, but I believe, again, that's going to be eliminated anyway.
Yeah, so it's, that's why I'm just making a notation of it, that it will be at the, on the approved set.
All right.
When that comes in. This is, so, apart from that, the footprint, the setbacks, the distance from the waterways, I have no issue on that.
I have a question. The decking, so it's kind of interesting, the plan shows the deck as part of the plan, but the pool, not as part of the plan, so are you planning to do, put the pool in at a later time, or are doing that at the same time as the construction? I think that's going to be put in a later time.
Later time, I need to reply, I'm sorry. This is Lumi Anderson, hi guys.
Could you give, just for the record, your address, please?
Yes, Lumi, if you can step up to the mic.
Thank you.
42 Harbor Drive South, so I'm the owner, and I wasn't here last month, I'm sorry.
Can you, Tracy, can you swear her in, please?
I did already.
No, I did in the same time in the back, but I can do it again.
I thought you did, I thought it was yours.
I did, but it's fine, we can do it again.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are providing to the commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, so, Lumi Anderson again.
Thank you.
So, like I mentioned, we are going to add a pool, it's going to be a different permit, it's going to be in different, you know, times, and everything that you see decks, we had some issues with the prior architects, so that's why I'm here. They didn't understand anything, they didn't, it was, it was a mess. So, they didn't comply with anything, they didn't read what you guys actually provide us with, so it wasn't our fault, but everything you see deck, it's going to be grass, it's going to be whatever the town needs, the way we can actually move in the house with the kids as soon as possible, so it's in your hands, but we just agree with whatever you guys propose.
Is the intention to install the deck at the time of the pool, or put the deck in at the time the house is built?
It's going to be with the pool. It's going to be with the pool, it's not, we're not in, yeah, it's a future thing, like also the few, where it says future spa, which we didn't know, because I'm not an architect, that's not even a spa, it's not a building construction, it's going to be one of those portable spas that I am going to add later on when we're going to actually be able to, so this is not going to be a construction here, it's just the architect didn't, didn't put on the plan what we actually said, so that's why it's where the misunderstanding is. It's not him, he's one of all, he's, he's representing us now, and it's going to be a different thing, but this future spa right here, it's not a build construction, it's not going to be a hole. It's not, it's going to be grassed over, we're actually going to put fake grass, because my daughter has high health issues, and everything, it's going to be just grass and trees and the way it is, honestly, so we don't want to try to change anything.
Then I have a question for staff. Wayne, will the deck not be part of this permit, then?
What I did, we took into consideration, it's not part of the permit per se, but I did take those numbers into consideration to make sure, should they have it, because it was indicated as future, the intent was there, we take that into consideration. So, those numbers were calculated, and they still met the purpose area.
That's, okay, that was one of my questions, yeah.
Yeah, I, when we did the calculations, we treated it as if it was going to be there, as long as you show the intent, that you intend on doing it, then I've taken into consideration. So, if they comply with that, and they meet that setback rule by eliminating the deck to the west, to the east side, they'll be fine. So, that's the extent of it, but they don't have to do it, but if they did it, we would be okay as well.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple of questions. This house, remind us, if you could, the reason for keeping that garage was for three-inch non-conformity on the west side?
On the east, yeah, on the west side, there was a two-point, well, it's a .24, which is about three inches, yeah.
Because you're doing, is this on piles, the existing house, or?
Yes, it is.
I mean, has anybody, you're raising the ground floor by almost...
Twelve inches.
Well, it's one foot three, I think.
Yeah, it's around, yeah, a little over twelve, I think.
And you're doing all that for three inches?
Well, it's the theme of regulations required.
No, I understand that, but I mean, you're leaving such a minimal part of the house. The other problem I see is, I don't know when you're going to get into structural drawings, but if you look at your first floor or second floor, I don't know how you're going to support that.
Well, that'll be with girders trusses. So, wood frame second floor, so we can support that with girders trusses.
But it steps back over the existing garage quite dramatically, it has three steps.
We use girders trusses all the time to do that. It's not going.
All right, I'm just, it seems like you're, for three inches...
Well, one thing on the garage, it is on pilings, and that, I don't believe, has to be raised up. We can keep that at the lower elevation.
Correct.
So, the garage doesn't have to be raised up, but the rest of the house does.
Okay, all right, it seems, you know what you're doing.
It's hard to move a graving.
This had a driveway that was a semicircle at one time, correct?
That's, that's correct.
So, we now corrected that, so no drainage.
It's been changed to appropriate, adequate space for the drain field, the new drain field is going in, and the discussions on the garage, they're going to require minimum of one inch per foot, one inch, one square inch per, square foot of venting, mechanical venting, smart venting, to allow for the lower elevation. That's going to be in place when the building plans go in, and I already discussed that, or they would have to raise that.
Be interesting to see. The other comment I have is, this private patio with the white gravel, I just don't think it's fair for you to put it all the way to the property line. I think it's kind of, almost an encroachment on the neighbor. That's in effect, almost a hard surface.
Can I speak?
Sure.
We can take it out, it's not even a private patio, so that's another thing. We're just going to have one of those outdoor showers for the pool, like in the corner somewhere at one point, if we will, but this, it can be just grass or gravel, and then, it doesn't have to go all the way there. So, it's just visual, looks bad, but it's, I mean, I have no problem in taking that off.
I don't think, well, that's your choice, I just think you should continue the hedge that you have shown in the landscape, it's kind of interrupted by that patio, and it's kind of a, I don't know if we have that drawing, yeah, there it is. The hedge stops and starts, and I think it's, if you do want to use that space for whatever activity, it should be buffered.
Okay, yeah, it's fixed.
By the neighbor. The architecture is an improvement. I think we're getting closer to, so, there are only a few minor things. If you look at the rear elevation, you see your transom lights? Can you pull that up, please, sorry? All right, the, that window to the right, or bottom right, you can see your transom, your transom mullions are...
Don't align.
All of, over the place, and it occurs consistently.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I know I may be picky, but those things drive me crazy.
It wasn't him, so now he, of course, sees that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just not a happy situation. The materials, the only thing is the red door, correct?
If possible, but not necessary, I'm very easy, so.
When you say red, I didn't see the chip, but I mean, if you're more of kind of a deeper red than a fire engine red, that would be nice.
Okay, perfect. Whatever you guys approve on red, I, just because it creates good energy, but it doesn't really matter, honestly.
No, I think it's fine to have a little bit.
I've been seeing red doors in here, that's why we love the town so much, it's so pretty and so colorful and so old Florida and beautiful, so that's the only reason, but, you know, I can go with brown or white.
I mean, have some fun, but don't just let it scream out.
No, no, it's not, it's not going to be, no, for sure not.
Would you like us to paint chips submitted on that, or for a future?
Yeah, I think we do need to see that.
We will definitely bring something.
Good, thank you.
When it comes to...
Maybe get a couple of different reds.
Absolutely, I'm not...
Any other board, are you done, Mark?
Yeah, I'm done, thanks.
Any other board members have any questions of the applicant? Good, well, thank you very much for making a very meaningful improvement of the town in...
I wish I was here.
And number two, thank you for your cooperation, we all appreciate that. Any, any members of the public here have any comments or questions? That then, any other discussion on the part of the board members? We'll then close our quasi judicial hearing and move on to a motion to forward our recommendation to the zoning official for, for the consideration.
I'll make that motion.
Good, with the, with the...
With the comments.
With the comments by Mark Marshall. Mark Marsh, I'm sorry, Mark Marshall.
I'm anybody right now.
You're anybody, good, okay, good, thank you. Rick, any other, a second?
A second.
Good, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Good, good, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now, moving right along, let's, let's go to, what is, item number three?
Four.
Four. I'm kidding. Early in the morning. Good. Tracy, would you give us a, an overview of four, please?
I'll do that for you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, good, thank you.
Pardon my voice, but I'm on cold medication today, if you don't recognize me speaking. These two items, four and five, are intended, they were brought forward to you to elicit discussion on this committee about where, what you would like to see, and where you would like to go with the parameters of moving stuff forward in the future. This board has asked for additional authority and additional teeth and additional parameters in order to look at stuff that comes before you, and we recommend that today you spend a few minutes taking a discussion to talk about objective standards that we might apply, and we have our planner here, too, who can interact with us, and staff, of course, to see what we might propose, back to the commission as a recommendation, to give you the kind of suitable teeth that you need to vet projects as they come forward here. So, that's kind of the overview here. Ask you to kick off some discussion and maybe weigh in on what, what you see as a reasonable set of rules and regulations to recommend, and we'll go from there.
May I suggest we start by asking our...
Can I just, sorry?
Yes, please, Mark.
Jamie, can you give us a short, because I wasn't present, unfortunately, I know Rick was the only one. This was discussed at the commission meeting, and I think, I'd like to just get a flavor of what...
If I can, I'm going to deflect to Rick, since he was there and actually spoke on behalf of the committee to the commission. I'm not sure the commission yet knows how much power it wants to cede to this board, or, you know, where the, where the guardrails are going to be on this, but Rick very eloquently addressed the commission at the meeting, was it last week, or?
Last week.
Two weeks, last week, and what kind of flavor or feeling did you come away from that conversation?
I think we've got several of us that were present, and so I would encourage Brian and Wayne to chime in here. It appeared to me that there's reservations about ceding any subjective authority, and that, so it, the, one that spoke most to this was Steve Cause, he had strong opinion that, that he didn't want there to be subjective authority, and that if it was limited and specific, I believe are the words he used, that he would be in favor of considering that. Now, if I can continue to say that that's difficult, that if we want specific, we can pass some more ordinances and include it in the code, and then have more things for Wayne to review to code. One of the things that this board has been doing over the last six or eight months is being, giving subjective criticism of certain things, you know, how the wood deck is going to be in this last discussion, how close the gravel is to the, to the edge of the property line, whether, whether the transom lights are aligned, whether the front door color is, this is a lot of what we have to lend, is a judgmental, subjective addition to the code. So, I think it's a challenge to really come back with a set of narrowly defined things that, that the commission gets comfortable in ceding to us. So, that's kind of my opinion and a quick synopsis of what was said the other night, but I would encourage the three staff people that were here to add anything that they heard.
Good, thank you. I think to your, your comment about perhaps it will require building some new pieces into the code to give you specific things to measure against, I think the concern is, and I heard it this morning, you know, like talking about colors of doors and things like that, the concern here is that under the current model, you can make great recommendations, and they can, I don't want to say fall on deaf ears, but they, if, if they go to the building official piece of this process, and the applicant meets code, under building code and town code, sometimes those recommendations can be ignored, and that's not, I think, what the intent of this board or the commission of the town is, but rather to encourage compatibility with surrounding houses, neighborhoods, and aesthetics that are, I know aesthetics are always subjective, but if there's a way to codify what could be objective in a way that you have an up or down vote, and you could articulate that to the commission in a way that they'd be comfortable saying, you know, either approve it and it goes forward, or send it away with conditions, and it comes back, sometimes that drives negotiation, even, you heard the applicant here today, very willing to tweak and adjust to, to make sure that their property was palatable to the town, but we don't always get that. Sometimes we get people that tell us, we can't tell them what their intent is, and as long as they're meeting code, have a nice day. We want to find that happy middle ground, so that's kind of the, the challenge here, is where, where is that line between subjective and objective, and something that we could actually use to check off and...
And one of my greatest concerns is, would be, just like this morning, we had an applicant that really spoke from the podium, that said they want to do these things, but they can take things that, now to Wayne, that are, fit the strict code, and not have to even meet the words that they put at the podium. Nothing to prevent that.
Right, that's the concern, and so I think the basic premise is, if, if the P and Z had an up or down vote, or had a way to get true negotiations, or a way to send a project away and have it come back because something is really askew from our code, that would be the optimal wording and power we could get the commission to cede to you, and it would make for better projects in the long run for the town, where there is willing negotiation to have things look, feel, and work very closely to the town code and to the aesthetic threshold that the town likes to see in its projects.
Good, thank you. Wayne, do you have anything to add to that?
I, I hear Rick's sentiments, and, you know, I pretty much agree with what he's saying, so.
Good, thank you. And Marty, our town consultant, previous meetings, we've suggested that perhaps you might look at some standards that we could consider, that you might think from a professional standpoint are appropriate standards, and even if they're only minimal standards, but at least something to begin, because I think we've also heard the comment that we're one of the few, if only town, particularly coastal town, without any standards to, to guide our, our future and our future aesthetics. So, Marty, any, any comment in that regard?
In that regard? Yes, good morning.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, for the record, Marty Minor with Urban Design Kill Day Studios. Yes, one of the things that were mentioned earlier, code amendments are going to be associated with whatever ends up happening, you have to have standards. You are the Planning and Zoning Board, you have a specific and incredible amount of expertise, and the way for this review process to work better is to better employ your expertise, not only within the town, but within the industry. That can go on several ways, you know, basically, you're looking for, we have to create new standards for you to help interpret, interpret and make those decisions. Quickly, just the, the processes, I would see as the three options, one's currently, the current process, which hasn't been working out. A second option is that the board ends up becoming a recommendation board, they would make recommendations on some of these petitions coming forward, that would move on to the town commission for final approval. I'm not sure if that's all in, I haven't talked to the town commission on that, but that's one of the options. The other option is, on certain development approval aspects, you set a limit of either size or just any house, that this board would be the deciding factor, they would make the recommendation, you know, would make the approval, Mr. Cameron would actually sign the permits, but the approval would be from this board, and any kind of appeal to that would go on up to the town commission. Those are the three pathways I see forward on this. Those are some of my thoughts.
Marty, now for the difficult question, and that is, with regard to option number three, do you have any suggestions as to the, the type of criteria that we might judge and vote on up or down?
Yeah, some of the, is real basic, I think, architectural standards, you can even apply that to landscaping, but things like a consistent beam all the way around the building, so you don't have certain styles on one side, but on the backside, it's something different. You don't see that a lot, but every once in a while, you'll do, when someone has a particular design in mind. Those type of aspects where they can seem subjective from the outside, that you give them criteria, that there is a consistency, there is, there's a sufficient... them criteria, that there is a consistency, there is, there's a sufficient covering of landscaping, those type of ideas, but you have to create a, a measurable impact on that, you know, that you can make the judgment from.
So we have two items, a consistent architectural theme, and number two, landscaping that is covering the entire site.
Yeah, that's just, those are the, probably the two largest ones, and you'd sort of expand from there.
Good, okay, any other specific items?
Not right off.
Well, Mark, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I share the concerns of some of the commission, you know, we don't want to be here regulating, you know, styles and colors and everything. I do that for a living, and it's not fun. But I think we've come, like we did with the open space, our code was such a zoning code, it was never intended to have any aesthetic or any architectural elements apart from some fairly basic massing criteria. But I think we've come to the point now, the crossroads again, where if we're serious about maintaining, you know, the, the ambience and the character of the town, we need to instill some form of aesthetic review. And my question to Marty, because I know he works for a number of other communities, can we not create a fairly basic, to the word subjective, I fight that daily, I think we just need some basic criteria by which this board or the commission can use to at least make a, a strong recommendation, if not mandate, you know, some, some revision or?
Yeah, I agree, there, there are basic standards that we can include within the code for the decision making without?
Yeah, we, we don't need to, and as I said, I don't see it, you know, if, if a color's totally off the wall, then I think we can put our hands up and say, you know, we're a little concerned here, but I think if we just have some basic criteria by which, and it helps, it helps the applicants as well as whoever's reviewing. And I think, that's my personal feeling, is that I think we just need to have, we don't need to regiment it, regulate it to the nth, but we've got to start, you know, and, and hopefully address some of what the, you reported the commission concerns were.
And this indeed is, what I'm struggling to come up with in my mind is what might be some of those objective slash subjective criteria that we might use in our review process.
That's where I think Marty's expertise has to help us here or guide us, and we, we can edit or whatever we wish to do.
Sure.
But I think if we have some kind of?
You can do that, okay, good. And are there other, other towns, Marty, that might be a good example, that we might want to consider, towns similar to this town?
Yes, we probably, we look at a, a variety of communities on the island, nothing jumps out as sort of, that we should follow. I think we will probably look at and see what'd be most appropriate for this town, and amend it to, to fit what we're trying to do.
And then Mark made a comment about strong subjections, suggestions. And again, I go back to the dilemma that we faced, a strong suggestion, recommendation doesn't necessarily advance our cause here. Mark, you know?
Well, I think it, it opens a discussion or dialogue as to whether it's a concern or not. I, I think Marty hinted on it earlier, is if this commission, the board, say, makes a motion that, to reject a project based on some criteria, applicants then move to the commission, that's the appeal process. So that's always available.
Yes.
And I, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, but that works successfully in other communities.
Yes, so good, so that's one idea, and I would want to put that on the table as a specific idea, because right now, we're lacking that step.
Yep.
Okay, good, so let's, let's keep that as a, a definite item for serious further consideration as part of the criteria. You know, you had a comment?
Yeah, Marty, do you find that our description of the town's characteristics is pretty lacking in the existing comp plan?
Yes.
That, that, that to do any, to advance any of these things, we meet a, a much better baseline of what's here already, and, and where it's located?
Yes, that would be the foundation for which these standards, which would be in the code, would be built off of.
Correct.
You would have this description of the existing and a description of what's desired in the town.
I, I'd like to see us put more effort into that part of, of the future comp plan. I, I, I think a baseline is, is required.
Before we come back to board discussion, let me just open it up for a moment to any comments from the audience. Does anybody in the audience have any comments? Yes, sir, please.
Good morning, Happy New Year to you all. Martin Vischelak, Five Angle Drive. I've seen this before, the, the problem with the subjective part that you're dealing with is, subjective is something that completely changed, and subjective is usually what, what gets, what gets people rallied up, because you're denying somebody and somebody else you're letting slide, and it's subjective. And, and I understand where you're coming from, and I understand that you're trying to streamline it. My suggestion would be to make sure that, for example, with the door, we, we have an owner here who's clearly an owner and who wants to be a neighbor, who, who listens to what your recommendations are. If the object, if the objection is the red door, for example, or the color combination of that red door, how far that red should be, we should consider, or the, the sport should consider recommending to the commission to bring forward an ordinance that regulates the color schemes of accent doors, or accent windows, or colors in general for a house. So my suggestion is to, to really not try to get into the subjective part and denying or recommending, maybe find a, find a tool where you can shut down a process, where you can say, you know what, no, this needs to go to the commission, we need to, if there's something that is grave, of grave concern to this board, find a way where it needs to go to the commission for an approval, or where it needs to go for, for specific, with specific recommendations from, from the sport. But, but don't put yourself in a legal position where you shut it down for subjective objection. Fix it through the code, don't fix it on a subjective basis.
Good, thank you. Any other members of the audience with comment?
You can jump up first, you can grab the microphone first, it's a theme, isn't it? Good morning, Christine DeHassett, 29 Sable Island Drive. I'm addressing you this morning as a resident, not as a commissioner. I can feel a little bit of the, the angst, and I will have to tell you, I actually came out of the last commission meeting with a very different feeling. This is the first time we have opened Pandora's box just a little. So I will remind all of you, there are five commission seats, the mayor has only one vote on that seat, and there's two commission seats coming available in March. Go forward, bring forward what you want, and it can always be shot down, it can always be added to, but I wouldn't have any hesitancy whatsoever.
Thank you, Christine. Any other comment? Don, please.
I'm Don McGruder, Nine Ridge Boulevard. I attended a Gulfstream town meeting on Friday, and there was a conceptual review before the commission on Friday, on a new house, on, what was it, Polo Drive? On Polo Drive. The commission had the roof color changed because it was too much like the house next door. They had the, the front, I believe, was changed, there was a ficus tree, and they're very big on the trees over there. So the planner was going to take the ficus tree down. The commission said, not going to take the tree down. Next came up, said, well, we can move it. So after about a five-minute discussion, they said, well, to move a ficus tree of that size is probably, you might as well cut it down, because it's not going, it's not going to be transplantable. So then the commission said, well, we're going to leave the tree where it is, we're not going to let you move it, we're not going to let you cut it down. That resulted in a change in the drive. And so these were the, the items that I remember that we discussed, to make that house fit in with the neighborhood. And me personally, not as a commissioner or whatnot, I think what you need to do is go back to what I've always said, what's to the left, what's to the right, what's across the street, and what's in back. And that's, you want that house to fit within the neighborhood. And someone said, I guess I can bring this up at this time, a picture is worth a thousand words, so Tracy, would you, I have twelve pictures that I'd like you to look at, I think there's twelve. So here's a house that's being built, and you can see that it really doesn't look, go back one, Tracy.
No, it's going on now, but?
Is it on a roll?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll go down this, this street, right? So this is what, now here, here's a picture right here. So here's a nice little house, here's another nice little house, and you can see what's next door to it. This is the same one, the house, the smaller house is to the existing house, neighborhood is to, to the left. Here's a, here's one with the sloping roof. There's another house with a new house next door to it. Where are these, Don? Hopefully, they're not in Ocean Ridge. That's my point.
That's all right.
Yeah.
So, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Any other audience members with comment? Yes, please, Zoan?
Zoan Henigan, 91 Island Drive South. My only comment or suggestion might be to get involved with these homes earlier in the process. I think at the stage that you get involved in the process, homeowners, architects, everybody is so committed, and it's so hard to make a change. So if you get involved at the beginning, it's a lot easier to sway them, to make sure that they meet whatever criteria that you, even subjective criteria that you feel that they need to meet to keep the, the flavor of Ocean Ridge that we want.
Thank you, and to that point, Wayne, do you see that opportunity, or by the time it gets to you for your first review, is it pretty much cast in stone?
No, we've got breaks in the system before it gets that far. There is quite a bit of dialogue and an opportunity for, for the applicants to come in and discuss projects before they get too far down the road. And in fact, the concept planner view is geared towards that, to bring what the applicant's thinking about before they go into getting a full set of building set plans drafted, let's make sure that before that expenditure takes place, is it going to meet the conformity of what the town's looking for.
Yeah, I think that's what we got under the concept criteria, I, I agree, earlier the better. So hopefully, you can broadcast that to owners or applicants, that, you know, it's, it's better to come in with a concept, this 42 is a good example of that. Don, with all due respect, I, the two towns I do most of my work are Palm Beach and Gulf Street, and if you want to see subjective criteria, you can, it's, Archon in Palm Beach is the, the country's toughest review board. But I, I think to the point, and as that gentleman said, you know, I think we need to, we don't want to get to that level. I think we want to just create a, a, kind of a menu that's pretty basic in terms of scale, some conceptual colors, type of fenestration, you know, flat versus slope, that's a whole other argument which we'll, or discussion we'll have. But I think we need to have something, as I keep saying, it helps the applicants. It's not just, you know, any board or any commission that's reviewing it. But Gulfstream is, they are allowed to do that because they have a, a very detailed man, manual.
Right.
Which?
And this, my pictures were obviously not taken in, in Palm Beach County, they were Kibiskane, but there's a, it's an example.
That's a whole other zone.
It is, and it, it has to do with what's approved and what's not approved. And where I'm going back was the same thing that Zoan picked up on, was that a conceptual review, and when I'm saying left and right, I would like to see them come in with a conceptual review with photographs of the house to the left and a house to the right, so that you all can see is that place going to fit in. And it has more, not so much to do with the colors and whatnot, but it has to do with the size and the scope and the shape of the home. And as I showed you on the, on the ones in, in Kibiskane, I mean, they have a lot of the old, I guess those were right after World War II, the old three-bedroom, one-bath, the three-bedroom, two-bath homes that are being replaced, but the, that community is going to the larger boxier homes to, because of the value of the property itself, they're coming in, they're tearing down the homes, they're building these big block homes that take as much space on the lot as they can. And so, it's just a little bit, I don't want to see Ocean Ridge go that way, but that's the design that we're starting to see coming into Ocean Ridge, and that's up to you all to decide whether or not you want it to go that way, or you want to put some restrictions on it.
Well, I think, Marty, that's a good, one of those towns I mentioned does require that you do a silhouette of the adjacent properties, just immediately, I think it's 200 feet on either side. Because that's one of my biggest fears, is the scale versus an existing owner or neighbor. And it can be very simple, and we all have Google Maps and Google Earth, or whatever they call it, so it's not as difficult to get, at least, it doesn't have to be every detail, it just needs to be really the math and scale, I think that, that's one of the criterias that would be helpful. So I, I think, but again, I, I want to jump forward, leap forward here a little bit. I, I was in a discussion, and I'm hoping, I'd like to poll this commission and, and make sure that the commission is, feels comfortable. You know, I think we all have our, our technical specialties and, and expertise, but would this commission be fully comfortable in reviewing these concept plans with some basic criteria, taking that responsibility on?
I would, I feel like it's more appropriate is, to give those comments early on.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I'm talking about, I don't think we, I think we now have, Wayne, we have a good, I think, good working commission. I don't think we need to look, we got Marty to bounce some of the technical aspects and the authorship of whatever it is. But I think, I just want to be comfortable that everybody here would be willing to, you know, play that role, or, not play the role, sorry, represent that.
Neil, or Jim?
I would like, I would like to see the process be a credible process in the eyes of the general population of Ocean Ridge, and that would entail consistent, standards that can be applied consistently, consistently. It wouldn't be like the Olympic ice skating competition where Eastern Bloc nations get low marks.
No doping, all right?
No, no doping. So I would be comfortable with it if we went through a process where we developed standards, which we consistently have the same image of what those standards mean when applied, but I wouldn't want to get involved with a But I wouldn't want to get involved with a process where everybody would say, "Well, that's not fair. You judge this house this way, this house this way."
Well, that's, that's part of the question, is, you know, if we undertake this responsibility, it's got to be fair. I, I don't think it should be on one individual or two individuals. I think it has to come through a board or commission where there can be dialogue, and not everybody's going to agree, but at least you, you, you know, you share a concern, and everybody might have a different concern. But I think it's a fair way for an applicant to, to get response.
Let me ask a question about the land development code. Right now, it's very minimalistic, and I think that's been the attitude of the town, obviously, for several generations. Do we need to have a more, I won't say aggressive, but a more active look at projects that we see that have pushed a boundary? And why do we have to wait till it's the second or third iteration of somebody pushing that boundary before we say that, that needs a response, that needs a, another piece of code? Flat roofs are an example, air conditioners that are higher than chimneys on tops of buildings, items like that. Why does it take such a long time to say, "No more"? We can't go back, I understand that, but there's quite a few things that we've seen around the town that we know we wouldn't like to see it done a second or a third time. And I don't think we have a, a process that says quarterly or whatever, submit for review things that you've seen that you would like to have discussed, and perhaps through that we develop a, a code of things that we, we've seen that give us something that takes us from more subjective to objective.
So, Neil, in that regard, then, maybe one mechanism to accomplish that would be for members of the public or members of the commission to request that an item be put on the agenda.
Absolutely. That's exactly where I'm going.
With consideration, and then recommendation to these town commissions for action.
Just, just like Mr. Marsh did at the last meeting and said he'd like, like us to do that with the flat roofs. So, I think there's several items that are like that, and I think that should be a normal part of our process now. If we, if we want to move forward to be more objective, I think the, the code is just going to have to be more detailed than it is now.
And, and it's a ongoing process, and we accomplish it to repeat by freely adding items to the agenda. And do we have that, does the public have that ability now, Tracy and Jamie, to add items to this agenda?
Not the public.
Not the, it comes through your administration, through the Parks Office or administration, requests come to us, and then we...
Either a staff recommendation or a member recommendation.
Or a member of the board.
Right, or a member, yeah, we would bring it forward for consideration for just that purpose. Another process we've used in the past, and I don't think we've really talked about it here, to, to address what Neil's talking about, is, you know, the land development regulations. Sometimes you've got your Board of Adjustments, you have your Planning and Zoning Board and your Commission, and we've, I've worked in cities where we've sat all three boards down and gone through the LDRs page by page, line by line, item by item, to, to flush out or to, to extract out the things that are problematic, or to updates that are outdated, that need to be looked at, things like that. But that's a arduous task to bring that to fruition. So, I think the recommendation that Neil's making now, where you see specific things that get under your skin, it would be a good idea to bring those, like we did on this agenda with flat roof discussion, you know, bring them forward as a single item and say, "This seems to be problematic in the town."
Good.
You know, can we have a, talk amongst ourselves and come up with some suggestions that might be implemented into the code to correct or address those issues?
Well, and to answer Mark's question about our comfort zone, I think this board is fortunate today that we have a professional on this board, a professional architect, who can make observations regarding things like fenestration. I would be concerned that if we were just laypeople sitting on this board, we might go off in very subjective and biased directions. Whereas with a professional, we, we have comments that can keep us grounded. And, and so, having somebody like Mark on a board like this, I think is important. But I'm curious as to, in other communities, do they have members of a board who, who, architectural review boards, who do have some experience, or is it just a bunch of laypeople spouting off whatever comes to their mind?
I've seen several communities where they require at least several members to be either architect, a planner, an engineer, someone within the land development industry to be part of the members, to provide a baseline of expertise.
So, that's a board membership requirement. Is it written, or is it just by custom?
It is written.
It is written, okay.
I, I can just give you a point of view. Years ago, in Delray Beach, we had rather more strict guidelines as far as who could be members of the board, and what we found out there, and we modified it to make it more lenient, because sometimes you run into having people fill those specific slots. And so, I, my only concern would be in a small town like Ocean Ridge, you might want to be careful about that and not have specific slots, but I mean, you can certainly have written guidelines to say, you know, "If we can, let's try to get people with this background," but nothing said in stone. Yeah, a good example is Gulf Stream doesn't really have, they're all laypeople. But they have that manual, which is their kind of bible that, you know, they interpret from. Again, please don't go there.
Well, I, I think, Mark, to that point also, Gulf Stream does not Gulf Stream mandate a Bermuda look, and therefore, it would be impossible to build a contemporary home in Gulf Stream.
Yes. Well, they, they have, and there, there have been challenges, and, and that's what's going to face us here. I mean, there's that horrible word precedent, you know, that, when does the, the horse, or the barn, or whatever that thing is.
So, one of the problems that we were faced with is, on one hand, if we go the Gulf Stream route, we have a nice harmonious community where everything looks, resembles each other.
Yeah, we're, we're not a gated community, so please, let's, I've sat on enough gated community boards, and you don't want to go there, because then it becomes a look-alike.
I'm totally with you on that.
I think that's the uniqueness, uniqueness of Ocean Ridge. We can afford a blend of architecture that can complement or sustain the town's image without, but we just need to corral it a little bit.
And Mark, in your opinion professionally, should that include allowing contemporary homes in this town to fit into a neighborhood where...
That's a powerful question.
Where the homes on either side are more traditional.
You're asking the wrong guy, because in forty-two years of practice, I haven't done a flat roof. Not in Florida, anyway.
No, no, but even on a flat roof house, just the contemporary houses that have been Is that an enhancing factor, and does it add character to our neighborhoods, or not?
I think to Don's point is that if there is an area in town that lends itself to that kind of, and I can't think of one, but having it just kind of leap into a neighborhood or a commu, you know, a street and be such a jarring, you know, addition to the street, that's where it has more impact. If you have, say, let's just use Island Drive on the, on the water where you live, if that becomes all contemporary on that whole wing, then, you know, you can say that, but it's hard, again, you can't mandate that.
And yet, in community after community along the coast, in particular, Delray, Boca, Highland Beach, we're seeing very contemporary homes pop up next door to traditional homes. And so, you know, it's, it's a, it's an important question.
But we're, I, I think to, to Don's comment, you know, would it be okay if that was a single-story contemporary home that was next to the small ranch tile with the, the red Mediterranean tile roof versus the house that's, you know, got a thirty-two-foot front face with, with the shiny brown fake woodstone, or whatever it is on the facade? I think that's where we're, the line we're trying to...
There is one criteria that is used, and I will quote, it's called similar and dissimilar. And that, that is a very, it's a strict, and I've seen it used very effectively, where you, if you have a concern that it's so dissimilar to the, the street or in the neighborhood, that you have some criteria by which you can discourage that. But again, you know, there is subjective nature there, but there is an ordinance on the books that can be, can be upheld.
Rick, just if you'll hold for a moment, a member of the audience, please.
I just want to mention something, because I'm new in town, and we moved from Boca. And prior to that, we used to live in Miami, and the main reason why we moved and we chose this town is because of the architectural and the fact that everything is so traditional and small, and it's not this, you know, big buildings and Mastodon homes and everything. So, we actually agree with the, you know, regulations and everything, because that makes what this town is. And I hope it's going to stay this way, honestly. So, like, you know, prior, you know, owners and people said, you know, "You don't want next to your house, you know, different design, architectural, that has nothing to do with the rest of the, you know, area." This is what makes this Amariel tour for fifteen years, and nobody knows about this town, but the people that do know about this town, they say the same thing.
Good.
It's just perfect. It's, it's small, it's beautiful, it keeps that Florida architectural, you know, tradition. And I think, I think that's what makes Ocean Ridge different than any, you know, any other towns around. So, just saying, that's why we chose that, and we love it, and we want to keep it that way. We come from a six thousand square feet home, and honestly, I'm glad that it's only three thousand square feet now, because it's better, it's beautiful, and it looks perfect. And it fits, it fits the neighbors. I not even moved in, we drive here every day with the kids, but we love everybody around, and everybody has the same goals. So, I, I'm just saying.
Good.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not a good speaker.
No, you are, you are, you're very, you're very good, thank you. Rick, please.
A few thoughts. I think the job of the town commission and this board is to keep Ocean Ridge, Ocean Ridge. And we need to make sure that, that that flavor that was just expressed continues on. And there's a tension between the people who are the Ocean Ridge residents and the builders and developers, whose job is to build and develop. And I've worked for builders and developers for much of my career, and the land development, as Marty knows, is pretty much maximize what I can get in value from this piece of property. And if that means a bigger box on that piece of property, these aren't Ocean Ridge residents for the most part. They're, you know, sometimes they're building for someone, but they're building, building for the objective of maximizing that development, which can be very inconsistent with what the neighborhood and the flavor is. And if we leave our land development code loose, we are low-hanging fruit, when it's hard to go and develop a contemporary home in Gulf Stream, or Palm Beach, or Manalapan, or where the criteria, that they're going to see a, a home, and, and, and it's an easy knockdown, and we get the maximize on that. And it's our job is to protect this community and the flavor. And if that means we have to have more standards in our land development code, that's going to be part of it. There's a, a huge gap between where Gulf Stream is today and where we are today. And if we moved twenty-five percent up from where we are, I think we could do a lot for the community.
Can I make that as a motion?
Yes, Christine, please.
I love this discussion, this stuff that makes me all excited. One of the things I looked up in our comp plan from nineteen eighty-nine, thank you, we need your help desperately, residential community character. The town has a unique character due to its predominantly low-density residential land use, extensive water access, and lush landscape. The role of the automobile is downplayed due to the convenience of pedestrian and bike circulation. The challenge of this plan is to preserve and enhance this character. The commercial services for the town are provided adequately by Boynton Beach. So, to your point, Member Henigan, I think it, starting with your, your comprehensive plan, which is your guiding bible, your, your foundation, your basis, and really either adding up what, you know, adding to what this says, or, you know, if, if I was reading this, and it says the convenience of pedestrian and bike circulation, to me, that says we should probably have a sidewalk everywhere, but that's not what we want. So, but this is how you start to, 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 to mold and everything, and it gives you the basis that if you do have litigation, unfortunately, which will come, you have a basis to say, "Does it, you can't really sue us, you know, this is, this is what we believe in." So, I think you guys are on the right, right path.
That's, that's a statement, and there's very little criteria to support it.
But I'm saying, you can, you can add to this criteria within your room.
That's where I think we're all heading, is that we've got to get a little bit more reference to be able to be, to be more...
Well, I have the town manager's copy, if anybody would like to borrow it for me.
Can I get that back eventually?
No.
And please...
Just for the record, our comp plan is online for anybody that likes to read it.
And I looked at it over the weekend, and there's a lot to it, very difficult reading. Marty, are we being helpful? Are we, are we giving you guidance that you can come back to us next meeting with some meat that we can consider and recommend to the town commission?
Yes, sir. Yes, you, you, this has been a very enlightening discussion, and I will come back to you.
You want more?
As much as you want to give.
Wayne, have, have we helped you?
Yes, you have.
Okay, good.
But in proper, primarily because I'm an enforcement arm of this discussion, so unless it's in the ordinance, and unless it's in the code, I, my hands are tied.
Okay, good.
I, I welcome your comments.
Good, thank you. Neil, any further comments on this particular subject?
No, I just, I, I'll reiterate what Christine said and, and what's been said up here. I think it needs to come top-down with development code and bottom-up with comp plan. I think we need to, to get to the point where we've made, made a twenty-five percent or more improvement or something, whatever, but I, I think we have to drive it from both ends to, objectively for Wayne and subjectively, so that we can...
Jim, any further comment? No? Rick, anything else? Mark?
No.
So, yes, Zoan, please.
Zoan Henigan, ninety-one Island Drive South. This has been fabulous, and as I've been sitting here, I just tried to want to summarize, because sometimes these discussions, you get sort of lost in the, in the, in the detail. So, it sounds to me that the objective here of, of this group in the commission is to protect Ocean Ridge as Ocean Ridge. And there's three main objectives, and they're not necessarily in the same order, but we need a better description of the town, we need to do this earlier in the process, and probably the biggest key is more specifics in the land development code or land development regulations, and a process to develop all the low-hanging fruit first with this group that you can come up, you know, from, from all of this group, and, and start knocking out the details.
Thank you. And then, may I add to that, the very fundamental point as to whether or not we want the ability to... to stop a project from, a home project, for example, from proceeding to building permit and, and, and either make them come back to us with revisions or recommend that they make a recommendation that they have to go to the Town Commission for an up or down vote. Do we all agree that we want that definite ability to stop a, 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 a home being built? Or recommend it to go to the commission for a yes or no vote? We, we want that too. Is that, do we agree on that?
Yes.
Right, we do. Okay, good, okay.
Well, I would say we want it if we have criteria that can be judiciously, consistently applied repeatedly, so the known questions are...
Yeah, no arbitrary.
Good, okay. Marty, there? Good. So, do you need a, a, a vote from us?
I, I'm not...
I think there's consensus.
Yeah, I, I think we, staff and, and everyone has consensus on what you're looking for, so...
Very good. Okay, great. So then, let's move right along to...
I've got to leave. Ten minutes.
Okay, well, let's cover the flat roof item.
Please.
Please, yeah, which is item number five on the agenda.
Don't let Mark...
No, we can't, we can't let you go, Mark. Okay.
This is your poster child, so...
No, no, I'm not...
Tracy, just a quick bit of background, if you would please, or Jamie?
Send you one memo. Well, real briefly, this is a conversation that came up at your last meeting and then went to some conversation at the commission level. And I think for the first time last month when you met, we heard some movement on this board based on some back and forth you had with some applicants in the audience about the, the problem phenomenon that you see in the town, which are these ultra-high parapets going on all over to essentially masquerade the requirement for a pitched roof in our building code. And I think there was an acknowledgement that perhaps you would reconsider and look at our code and look at the phenomenon of flat roofs because many, I think it was an architect in the audience at the time that suggested that the town might benefit by allowing flat roofs in certain circumstances that would actually bring down the profile or the massing of the building by eliminating the need to masquerade a pitched roof, drainage off the roof and other things that seemed to propel them upward to the full building height. There was some consensus that came out of this board that you might want to look at that issue and see if there was a, a place to land there and see if there was something that we might be able to do that under certain circumstances, it would be permissible to amend our code to allow that, that style in certain cases.
Mark, do you have a professional opinion on that subject?
I, my statement stands. I said, basically, let's, for, masquerade is a great analogy for that. It is, it's either flat or it's pitched. You know, this, this hybrid that we have created in this town where you, you create a very high vertical surface to masquerade or hide a pitched, I think is totally wrong. Which leads to the question, do we allow flat roofs or not? How do we discourage them? As I said earlier, I'm not a big advocate of flat roofs because this is the tropics and you want to shed water as quickly as possible. But I, I'd like to, again, ask Marty to come back to this commission with some criteria that one, that deny flat roofs and two, that allow flat roofs under certain criterias such as limiting the height of parapets and that kind of criteria and see what, what then creates in terms of, again, another menu for options. I don't think we're at a position of making, you know, an up and down recommendation on flat roofs versus no, not, no flat roofs.
Can we expand the consideration to not only looking at whether it's parapitted or not, but to the actual physical height of the exterior perimeter walls?
Which is a, currently, that's what the parapet is, the top of the parapet is.
Correct, but the top of the parapet now is being defined by the, the max height, which was assumed to be a pitched roof.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, well, that's, that's my point, is that...
Yeah. Good, good point. And Marty, can you include that?
If you take, if you take the pitched roof out, we, we still think, or people still think they can go up to that limit. I think it should be very clear that there's...
Yeah, and that, that's what I was asking him because there is criteria on the books in some towns that limit the height of that parapet as a total flat roof in lieu of the masquerading.
Yes.
And it, it brings the scale down tremendously.
Good point.
It's a point of, I'd, I'd like, if you could bring back some of those reference points, so, to address...
And, and second consideration is defining a, a single-story height for a house. Because the second criteria is the max height that we have for the tie beam.
Right, and the ridge height.
And the ridge height. And both of those are assuming, assuming a two-story or a story and a half or whatever type house, that maybe we ought to define a single-story house for the first time.
Marty, is that...
Yep.
Are all those things possible?
Yes.
Within your professional consulting realm? Good. Rick, please.
This, of the two items that we have here that were at the Town Commission, this was the one that had the most passion by the Town Commissioners. And my sense of it is, they don't like flat roofs. Now, you know, there may be a compromise, but there wasn't a lot of excitement about flat roofs in this town. Not, and that meant parapets, anything that looks like a flat roof. Is there any reason, if we so chose and the commission so chose, that the town banned that type of, of a roof? And, and is there a problem with that from an architectural standpoint?
That's why I think we need to look at some historical references.
Yeah, I, I was quite surprised by, you know, the, the number of comments that were, they didn't like the parapets, they don't like the flat roofs, they don't like...
Sure.
Yeah.
And, and yet, with, yet on the other hand, we, we need to recognize the aesthetic legitimacy of, of a contemporary home and the sometimes character it adds to a neighborhood. And, and I'm, my problem is, I don't think there's an all-good or an all-bad. I think there's a harmony factor that needs to be factored into this whole equation, but... Jim, any other comments?
No, I would agree with your last statement, though.
Good. Any members of the, of the public, the audience who have comment? Yes, sir, please.
I feel horrible.
No, please, no, we need you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here, seriously.
My English is a five-angle, thank you. The flat roof, correct me if I'm completely off here, but the flat roof really comes in on the modern contemporary homes.
Correct.
So, it's an architectural feature that is practically necessary for modern contemporary. It sounds to me more like that there's a consensus that modern contemporary is not an architectural style that is desirable to the commission members, is desirable to this board. Again, if that is the case, I disagree with it. I love these homes, but if that is the case, then it needs to get regulated.
Sure.
As far as the roofs are concerned, you know that better than me. Can we, I think right now, the code is a twelve-four pitch.
Twelve-four.
And maybe we can go to a twelve-one pitch. Would that alleviate the, the flooding problems, the, the water runoff?
Well, you have to, quarter-inch foot, you know, that drain, so you're going to have some elevation, but it's not going to be, you know, six or seven feet, which...
It's not going to run off as quick as the other ones.
Yeah, but it, they are...
But there's modern, there's modern techniques for roofs today that, that make it drain much faster than the old with the gravel and...
Yeah, absolutely true.
That just holds water on the roof.
The issue is masking or hiding a pitched roof, which is a...
The pitched roof, which, which I completely agree with. It makes no sense building a, a three-foot, four-foot parapet in order to hide a roof. That, it's ridiculous. I agree with that. So, basically, what I'm, what I'm saying is, either, either say modern contemporary is an architectural style that is not desired for this town, we don't want it, regulate it, or, you know, let these, let these flat roofs come. Because you, this is one of the things that, that the Vice Mayor has brought out, is you're coming, the reality of this town is this. A property underwater costs a million dollars plus. This is the reality. This is an old home somewhere that is underwater, this is a million dollars, and it's a million dollars because of the land. It's not a million dollars because it's an old fifties ranch-style home. So, that home is going to get destroyed. It's going to get ripped down, it's going to get replaced with something that is to today's standard. Doing the one, the, the single-story home, I think, is unnecessary because nobody in this town that's going to take down a building, an existing building, is going to rebuild it as a single family. It, it's going to go two-story no matter what, simply because you have a million dollars on the footprint that you're investing already. You're not going to put a hundred-thousand-dollar home on a million-dollar piece of land. So, we're looking at, we're looking at basically architectural styles that you need to consider or de-consider, to be fair.
That's why I keep...
Thank you.
This dissimilar, similar is a, is a criteria by which you can...
Mark, is your definition of hybrid, the pitched roof behind the parapet, or what it, what do you call, is it a mixed house when it's got the flat roof on one section of the house and, and like the big house we considered in December that had the breezeway and the, and the big garage that, that had pitched roof? What, what do you call that type?
Well, it is a hybrid. I mean, you're, you're mixing two roofing styles together. But the reason we're, under our code, is we, we do not allow flat roofs, period. They have to have a four-and-twelve pitch. So, what happens is that impacts the scale of the architecture tremendously. And that's what I'm, I'm trying to fight against.
Right, agree.
Because that's, but I think I do have to leave here. I think, Marty, if you could find, as this gentleman again correctly said, there are, there is language that can deny flat roofs, that has been tested by certain communities. So, we need to look at that as the more populous approach and then look at it, if flat roofs are allowed, here are the reference points in terms of heights and mass. So, those are the two things we've got to look at and, and then we can discuss them.
And, but back to the mixed building that's got pitched and possibly flat?
I, I, I said it many times, get rid of that because that's a charade.
None at all. You don't want that at all.
Yeah, no, because that, that's...
It's either flat or pitched.
Yeah, it's a duck, you know what the duck theory is.
So, Marty, before you leave, may I ask, Jamie, Brian, Wayne, is, is, do we now have enough, do you now have enough from this board?
I think so, working with the planner and the technical side of this.
Okay, good. You don't, you don't need a, a vote or anything at this point.
Just consensus from you all, that's what you want to look at.
That's our consensus, I think. Are you satisfied that you've heard a consensus? Good, thank you.
Okay, can I just interrupt with one? I have been approached to review a plan that's scheduled, I think, for Wednesday by an applicant. I would rather not do, deal with applicants individually. You know, I don't want to give my opinion without the rest of the commission.
Did they approach you directly or through town?
They directed, directly.
You might refer them back through staff because of the potential conflict there.
Right, I, I'd rather not, and this goes for any member, I don't think you want to deal with a one-on-one situation.
I mean, it's, it's up to the member if they want to do it, but they would have to disclose that, hey, I'm not with the person, this is what we talked about and did all that. That's certainly, you know, you can do it if you want.
Right.
But it's, you know, each individual member can make that determination on whether or not they want to meet with a developer one-on-one prior to a meeting.
Just, if I may, to quickly reiterate what was said earlier, staff promotes and makes available pre-con meetings for anybody that would like them, and we encourage it because we find the value in troubleshooting this stuff on the front end before it even, even gets to your level.
I, I just think it's unfair to put one party, you know, in that position. I, I think we should discourage that personally.
Good. Okay, thank you, Mark. I'll let the record show that Mark Marsh is leaving the meeting. However, we still have a, a quorum and can deal with the last item on the agenda, which is number three, comp plan amendments. Tracy or Jamie, would you please brief us on this?
Well, this is, this is really the, the planner portion of the show. Marty's been working on some things to talk about potential comp plan updates to the town, both compliant and things we might look at to improve it. He has a memo in your backup, but I'd like to invite him up to kick it off to tell us a little bit about where we are and where we need to go.
Marty, please.
Yes, good morning once again. Marty Minor, Urban Design Kill Day Studios. As we've been discussing, we started off looking at, the state requires us to update the conference plan to address sea level rise. And we've been working through the coastal management element and making some changes and we've, we've got a, a markup of that. At the last meeting, there was discussions that there was other aspects of the, the conference plan that needs to be looked at. And from that process, there was a request that staff and that these boards look through the documents and to provide additional input on what could be updated, what could be changed, any kind of questions. And so, this is part of that process, to get your input. And then, we'll come back with, based on the input we've received from you and staff to revise a larger draft of the conference plan for your review.
And what is it that we as a board should consider and address today?
Things you want to look at are things that, that you see no longer affect the city, no longer apply, are somewhat outdated. Other things you can look at is things that are not even addressed, that has since become an issue of importance within the town, that needs to be addressed and have a policy set for. Those are the type of things we're looking for, things that no longer need to be addressed or needs to be addressed, that's not within the current document.
Well, as I looked at the comp plan online over the weekend, my head was swimming with all the stuff in it.
Yeah.
And I asked myself, well, where do I start? How can, how can I be meaningful? And I, I didn't come up with an answer.
A, a, a good way of also doing that is going element by element. You focus on future land use and elements. That is something that applies to, you know, what you do every month, it ties into the future land use settlement. The other aspects also apply, but not quite as directly, so that may be a good place to start.
Neil, you're good at this. Do you have any suggestions as to what we can do that's meaningful?
I, I think I made my major suggestion already, that I, I just think it needs to be much more descriptive.
Yeah, good point. In terms of the character of the town today and the character of the town that we see in the future?
Well, the character of the town that we see in the document now is very, that's very antiquated. And, and I think language referencing what Rick is saying to where... And, and I think language referencing what Rick is saying to where, if we can develop a statement of where we want it to be, you know, whether, whether maintaining character is strongly developed in, in the comp plan or the character that we, I don't know whether it's a negative thing or a positive thing. I think we try to, most of the things I think we're talking about here are, are negative. We're trying to keep things out. But we, I think in the comp plan, we have to state things in a positive way.
Yes.
And I think that's, that's harder to do, something that's probably more in your bailiwick than ours.
Right.
I think that would be the.
Right. And based on the input and discussions we are having, will help me draft those.
Yeah, I think we've given you a lot of guidance today to getting there.
It's been very helpful.
So therefore, do we take this step by step and we deal with the couple of items that we've discussed today at length? Flat roofs and getting this muddy criteria in teeth. And then we accomplish that and then we move down, we move on to a bigger picture review of the comp plan? What, what would be meaningful for you from us today?
All right, the, the first, the, the slub roofs and conceptual plans, they're, they're not part of the conference plan.
Right.
So while I'm preparing those and coming back to you on that for the next meeting, if we could have specific areas that you look at. If you want to do one element or the first three elements, and feel free to just look at it and mark it up.
So give us an element that you think would, 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 it should be of immediate concern in the comp plan, one section.
Future land use element.
Future land use element. Okay, makes a lot of sense. So, so you're giving us homework, in other words?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I figured we shared around.
Okay. Pretty clever. So, so therefore, we have, and, and Jamie, can, can we, can we get some direction from you and Tracy and Wayne before the next meeting of maybe that document? I mean, you know, we know we can get it online and we know we can, we can.
Sure, we could, if future land use, for example, is a, is a good priority start, we could do some excerpts from that and distribute it out to you so you could look at it so that you don't have to get the entire document or download the, or read the whole thing online, but kind of extract out things to focus on a little bit and give us some feedback and have that as part of the backup for the next meeting.
Okay.
So we can also feed your responses and Marty.
Okay, good. And you have been an orderly man, so we're not coming back to you and Marty with the whole bunch of stuff for seventy pages worth of comp plan, but give you some specific meaningful things regarding this one section.
It's very difficult to wordsmith by committee, so I, I would caution you all not to get deep into the minutia of it, but look at it more conceptually as to where you think, either in that element or any other element you stumble upon. Some of the language is problematic. We heard a lot here today that just the description of the town is, is outdated because it was written a long time ago and hasn't been updated. And maybe the town, as you see it today, as you drive around, might reflect a little bit of a different descriptor than, than what's described in the comp plan. So those are the kinds of things that if you see that or something jumps out at you, let us know and we'll, we'll feed it to the planner and.
Marty, would comments such as trying to, to say we, we, we want to restrict the height of multifamily to four stories or three or six or whatever, is, are those specifics the kind of things that you want? Or just the generality of saying maintain it to what we have today or?
Any proposed changes, yes, specifics, that would be appropriate.
Okay.
If, if I might add, because it kind of dovetails onto that conversation. If you remember when we had workshops with Boynton Utilities, and I've mentioned this to you, Mr. Chair, a really big future decision for the town is where we're going with potable water and sanitary sewer and things that are critical to a crossroads in the, from density purposes, height purposes, everything. And there was much discussion, both in the charter review process as well as at the various board levels about where will the town be going in, in the next several years? Not if, but when some of these things become absolutely essential or even worse mandated by levels higher up.
Sure.
The, the various utility providers have stated that they could work constraints and service levels and things into their systems. And this town really hasn't taken on that bear yet as to what that's going to look like and how that's going to impact everything, not only from updating our existing infrastructure, but providing for a conversion at some point in time to, from sanitary or from septic systems to potential, at least, zone sanitary sewer or full sanitary sewer. And then just that affects the, the right-of-ways, the swales, the sidewalk. All the issues start to pour into the taking back or the utilization of the town's right-of-way and what that'll, what impact that'll have on future land development, which I've heard clearly in every setting, we want to restrict and limit to the scale and scope and aesthetic of Ocean Ridge. But that's an elusive description of what that means at this point in the juncture.
Yes.
Speaking of utilities, have we had any input or assessment from FPNL about this water rise issue? Does it impact them and, or us three?
Are you, are you talking specifically, for example, in under, undergrounding and things like that?
Any undergrounding or any surface transformers or anything that's, all their infrastructure that's within the, the limits of the town?
Well, I can assure you that the, the power company loves having their wires up in the air. And I can assure you that, that's easier to fix. And as much as there's, undergrounding is in vogue in certain areas, it, it's not a panacea to, to fix when, especially in a coastal zone like this where we have real significant groundwater, groundwater table issues.
But have they given us an assessment?
Uh, no, we haven't done that.
Do they have to under any of this Florida code stuff?
The city of Highland Beach, I think, the attorney who does some work down there could attest to this. They, they recently did a study about doing all that kind of stuff and it was sticker shock at very least. And, and I'm not sure they want to go down the road that they've had studied, but it's a very expensive proposition to underground power. However, in the future, if you're looking at upgrading the, the potable water infrastructure, looking at sanitary sewer, everything, if we're going to be digging up the streets at some point in the future, those questions will be asked.
No, I wasn't advocating underground. I was just the advocate, wanting to know if there's been an assessment of what we have and what's impacted with the water going up. Totally different.
We're in, well, go ahead. Do you want to speak to it, Don? Yeah, well, we're on, we're on a lot of, both local and regional groups that are looking at these issues. And we've certainly been looking at it. I, I attended a number of meetings with the vice mayor and commissioner and stuff that are looking at those, the issues of sea level rise and some of those impacts. But drainage infrastructure, I didn't even mention in my list there, stormwater drainage infrastructure, that's a whole nother utility that we really don't deal with or ignore. That's a big ticket, future decision-making item. You know, they're all interrelated.
And the tail, therefore, the tail that wags, the dog, which is everything we've been talking about today, is really what's the future of our utility system from.
It's going to be a major player.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, it's, it impacts all of this stuff. We, and so therefore, we need to analyze the future of this community in light of where we're going to end up with the utility system in ten or fifteen years or sooner.
The feedback, just briefly, if I may, Chair, the, the feedback we got from newly elected state officials is that because water issues were prevalent at every level of people running for office at every level of government, there is already drafting going on in Tallahassee for the upcoming legislative sessions and beyond that will start to look at those issues in terms of you will and when versus if.
Good, thank you.
It's becoming a prevalent discussion at higher levels.
Good. Yes, Don, please.
Don Drucker, Andrew Bullard. The sea level rise issue is one that's creeping up on us much quicker than what was originally anticipated. And so I'm on a committee working with a number of seven communities within the Palm Beach County area. Now, we're trying to do an assessment of what actions need to be taken. And Boynton has gotten a grant that we are part of as far as going out and looking to find a professional that can come in and do a vulnerability study, which would be done. And I think, Rick, you were talking about last time, we're moving that timetable up. But it looks like that we're headed towards being able to do that next year in 2020. What I wanted to bring up was that you all in Planning the Zoni meeting on, on May fourteenth of last year, you did a land development code review. And perhaps what you all would want to do is go back and go through that list. Because, I mean, you had general discussions, you had matrix discussions. A lot of those things that you've done so far, like the bedrooms and the parkings and whatnot, those are all good things. And what you did with the thirty-five percent absorption on the lots will help us so much.
Yes.
I mean, those, you guys are headed in the right direction. And I guess to Jamie's point, the other area that we really need to start looking at, and I don't want to get hit with any stones from the audience, but we need to start looking at the sewage systems because that with sea level rise is, is going to be a problem.
Absolutely.
And the other thing you need to talk about is that the infrastructure, the water pipes, we own the water pipes, but we're held hostage to Boynton as far as getting them fixed and so on and so forth. So there are a lot of things going on that we need you all to start really thinking about and discuss. I mean, it's, it's going to take some time.
Sure, and we have the town, as a town, have been derelict in not looking at those future need items.
Yeah, I mean, we need to, we need to be looking down the road at, you know, five or ten years.
Not just react to current problems.
Yeah.
Okay, great meeting. And with that, may I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jerry. You do a phenomenal job.